Viewers have named 149 defendants, and he says you don't want to be on the list of defendants.
The city has online a list, I think there are now 147 locations on that list. If a location is not on that list, I urge residents of our city not to shop there. If people wish to be employed by recreational marijuana locations, again, look at the list.
Among the violations, not paying state and city fees, not getting the required permits, or being located too near a school or park. But the biggest thing that will single out a marijuana shop is the presence of other criminal activity. City leaders are going after those shops first.
We've tried to identify those locations where there's the most significant criminal activity, or where there are nuisances, or it just basically impacts the quality of life for the community members of Los Angeles.
Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson has launched his own fight against illegal marijuana operators. About a third of them are in South LA.
In almost every community you go into, or many calls that we get into our office, saying, "When is the city going to do something about the inundation with illegal cannabis shops?"
There are businesses that are operating lawfully. How unfair is it to them to allow competitors who can undercut them because they're not following the rules? That's not right. It's not what the voters wanted, and it's not fair to those businesses that are playing by the rules.
So the message is out to marijuana shops. Play by the rules, or see your business go to pot. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
City leaders say each violation can bring a $1,000 fine and up to six months in jail. The city of LA is on a mission to go clean and green, and it's one of its latest projects. The Department of Public Works Bureau of Sanitation reveals the winners of its food waste challenge. Anna Marcos joins us from LA City Hall Farmer's Market to show us how the program could help our environment. Anna.
Yana, you are looking at seven innovative solutions for how to keep food waste out of our landfills. It's all part of the Department of Public Works Food Waste Challenge.
This is Projekto Jardín, and we have a compost academy. So we have about 20 people doing the academy, and we're learning how to compost. With compost, you first start off with the browns, which could be haystacks or any browns that's around your garden or yard. And then you have the greens, which is the rotting veggies that you may have.
Projekto Jardín is one of seven local groups that won a hefty $7,500 prize for an innovative food waste idea. Its composting academy teaches people like you and me to compost. It's all part of the LA Sanitation Department of Public Works Food Waste Challenge.
The food, when it goes to our landfill, it decomposes quickly, and it creates a lot of greenhouse gases. And so environmentally, we really want to get food out of the landfill.
The Department of Public Works is focused on three ways to do that: through composting, food waste prevention, and food rescue. Giving food to organizations that help the needy instead of throwing it away. Right now, a third of the food in our country ends up in the waste heap.
We have a crisis of hunger and food insecurity and food access all across the city. So there's no reason we should be throwing food away when people are actually going hungry.
These groups with their innovative ideas just might help make our world a little greener and less wasteful. From food recovery ideas, to food recycling programs in the schools, to a composting idea with a Japanese twist.
We have our own waste here, and as you collect it, you just add a little bit of this bokashi mixture. It helps in fermenting or breaking down of your food waste into good soil.
There are also plans to start hubs at community gardens and farmer's markets where people can drop off their compost. Atwood Farmer's Market becomes the first one to do so, and the city wants to help you get started.
LA Sanitation has a compost bin program where we offer $25 compost bins for people that are interested. We want more people composting.
So before you dump those rotten strawberries, say no to greenhouse gases and start composting. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Three agencies also received grants for their part in planning the food waste challenge. For more information on how to get started composting, call LA Sanitation at 800-773-2489. While thousands of LA Unified School kids spent a day at the beach, not to play, but to pick up garbage mostly left by adults. Gil Reyes shows us what they found.
Lots of bottle caps, and we found like papers and cigarette butts. And I'm just so sad that people throw trash on the beach.
But they do. That's why busloads of children are participating in this massive cleanup.
A sea of children here, about 4,500 kids taking part in Kids Ocean Day here at Dockweiler State Beach. Basically, the nonprofit Malibu Foundation hosted a series of assemblies at schools about the dangers of pollution in our waters. This is a culmination of all those lessons.
How one piece of trash, when it's dropped on the street and it rains, goes down to the beaches and oceans.
Michael Klublock from the Malibu Foundation has visited schools for 25 years to reveal inconvenient truths about pollution and the environment without preaching.
So I said, "If you use a paper cup, you're part of cutting down a tree somewhere on the other side of the planet." You're not a bad person. You know, we all do it. But now you're aware, and now you can make a choice.
Straws are a big thing. I haven't been using straws lately.
Emmett Kleiger avoids straws because straws are made of plastic. Eight million metric tons of plastic wind up in our oceans each year, threatening marine life. Emmett entered a citywide children's poetry contest about ocean conservation and won.
Roses are red, oceans are blue. But that can't happen without the help of you. The ocean has trash, but that can be fixed. You really should be mindful of it. With all said and done, the fight to clean trash has just begun.
LA City Public Works invites you to join the cause.
Participate in community cleanups, participate in anything that has to do to keep the sidewalks and the street clean.
Because a lot of that waste ends up here. From Dockweiler State Beach, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
8,000 kids took part in Ocean Day cleanup statewide. More than half of those children were at LA's cleanup at Dockweiler. A big boost for the environment as LA voters approved Prop 68, giving a big thumbs up to a cleaner, greener future. Anna Marcos shows us what Prop 68 is all about.
Make some noise if you like clean water. Make some noise if you want to beat the drought. And make some noise if you like green spaces.
Angelenos, along with Californians all over the state, can now make all those green dreams come true after they passed Proposition 68 in the June primary elections. Both Mayor Eric Garcetti and environmentalists, also big supporters of the measure.
The benefits of parks cannot be overstated. We know that trees act as giant air filters.
Prop 68, the Parks, Environment, and Water Bond, would provide more than $4 billion to build more parks and more environmental and water projects, as well as help clean up our groundwater.
We want to make sure that through Prop 68, we can prepare for this drought that we are living in and the tougher times ahead by reusing, recycling, and making sure that we have the water we need.
There are thousands of Californians throughout this state who lack access to clean drinking water, and families in some disadvantaged communities unable to trust their taps.
I shouldn't have to choose between affordable housing and a safe street for my kids to play on, and green space for them to meet their friends and hang out, and clean water.
And Prop 68 could have another positive effect, creating more environmental jobs, such as those provided by the LA Conservation Corps for at-risk youth like David Soto.
Prop 68 would directly feel the work of groups like ours. Wait, I read that part.
A win-win for the environment, local jobs, and our health and well-being. And Angelenos have said a resounding yes. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Governor Jerry Brown, as well as many other environmental and health groups, also supported the proposal. Well, we live in a city with a deep-rooted history, and there's no better place to get a feel for that history than by visiting one of the city's oldest buildings that'll take you back in time, not only with its architecture, but also with its grapevines that are more than a century old. Rasha Goel takes us there.
A walk through history and LA's oldest standing house in the city. It's the 200th anniversary of the Avala Dobby, which is located in the Paseo of historical Alvera Street, a part of Los Angeles Plaza Historic District. And did you know...
She's also one of our most visited museums. There's almost 400,000 people that come here every single year.
The Avala Dobby was built in 1818 by Francisco Avala. Throughout the years, the Avala home hasn't changed much from when it was originally built. The Avala Dobby is also famous for its 152-year-old vines.
These grapevines here, we discovered that they are actually the old Mission grapes. The Mission grapes are the grapes brought up by the Padres in the 1700s when they settled California.
California Wine Country was not up in Napa. It wasn't up in Northern California. The first California wine country, we're standing in the middle of it right now.
He also says the Mission grape is actually a hybrid of two grapes that helps create good wine.
It's an opportunity for people to kind of get a little bit of history, but also indulge in a little bit of good food, good wine, and the opportunity to live the good life a little bit.
The event was a fundraiser for the El Pueblo Park Association, which helps preserve the precious landmarks of Los Angeles. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
There were attempts to demolish the property, but it was eventually deemed a historic site. So you think smelly garbage and old recycled gadgets can't draw a crowd? Well, think again. The LA Department of Sanitation's yearly open house drew about 1,000 people or more to some of its sites. Anna Marcos has more.
These guys are serious about getting the word out that Angelenos get free bulky item recycling. Well, not too serious. Sanitation is the name of the game here. The LA Department of Sanitation is holding this open house at each of its six sanitation yards throughout the city to teach residents about all the things it does for the public. And yes, smelly garbage and recycling are among them.
Well, that we learned that we can recycle more garbage and do less garbage instead of more garbage.
I love the fact that you take the old garbage trucks, cans that are damaged, and recycle them into doormats and other items.
It's a super family-friendly event and really seems to draw in the little kids with its big trucks.
He just wanted to come and do all the garbage trucks, and honk the horns, and move the bucket up and down.
My brother, his favorite thing, my brother's thing, he just loved the garbage trucks. I don't know why.
Our son is absolutely mesmerized by garbage trucks, garbage trash trucks, anything that has to do with recycling.
It's Disneyland for kids out here. They get to demo the trucks. We have satellite trucks they ride in. We have free trees. We give away 100 trees. Kids get to plant plants, tomato plants, pepper plants, strawberry plants, take them home.
Yep, free plants, free trees, free mulch, and of course, free recycling and free bulky item pickup. That's on top of the usual garbage collection and water reclamation that any sanitation department does. Oh, and yeah, free hot dogs, too. Who would have thought garbage collection could be this much fun? I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
There are also plenty of games, activities, and prizes for both big and small kids. Boat tours through LA Harbor can cost you and the family $40 per ticket, but not on this day. Gil Reyes reports on why the port of LA was ferrying people at no cost from Wilmington and San Pedro.
All aboard. For one day out of the year, the port of LA offers free boat tours through LA's massive port complex, and not just for nature lovers. Whoa, did you see that?
They get an exclusive view from the water of all of the operations going on here in our harbor. A lot of these people, you know, they're locals, or they've never even been to San Pedro or Wilmington. And they have all of this industry happening right in their backyard, but they don't know anything about it.
The one-hour excursions taking off from Wilmington and San Pedro coincided with World Trade Week, highlighting the benefits of global commerce. And what better way to recognize than at the ports of LA and Long Beach? Forty percent of our nation's imports pass through here.
A lot to take in.
Passenger Marcia Gamboa also got to see a different view of the USS Iowa, San Pedro's resident WWII-era battleship. There's the Vincent Thomas Bridge, the Los Angeles Lighthouse, cranes, cranes, and so many other familiar sights.
We're just seeing how they're reconstructing, like they're remaking the whole portico, you know? So it's kind of like new or different to see how what we're used to seeing is not there anymore.
It feels nice. The wind feels good.
Whoa, what's going on now?
Oh, they turn so fast.
I think we hit a wave.
Nothing but smooth sailing after that. From LA Harbor, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The company Harbor Breeze offers boat tours throughout the summer vacation season. You'll have to pay for these excursions, though. Find out more at tosewales.com. A new chief of police gets ready to take the reins at the LAPD. A couple of streets near elementary schools in Boyle Heights are about to get a lot safer, and recognizing the works of the city's Public Works Department. All these stories in City Beat. Incoming Chief of Police Michael Moore says he's looking forward to continue the work of building trust between the LAPD and the communities it serves by supporting and listening to community and police department members, and working to reinvigorate the department to make it the best it could be. In addition to building trust among communities, his other top priorities include public safety and building a more diverse organization.
I am certain the safety of Los Angeles will be improved, the trust in our men and women will be improved, the confidence of our people will increase, and we will be that bright, shiny city up on the hill that every Angeleno so much wants us to be.
Councilmember Jose Huizar joined Breed Street and Sheridan Street Elementary students, parents, faculty, and other city officials to break ground on $5 million in safe routes to school improvements in Boyle Heights. From 2011 to 2015, there were 44 collision-related injuries, including two fatalities along Soto Street near the two schools. The planned improvements will create a network of neighborhood-friendly streets to improve the safety of people and students walking and bicycling in the neighborhood.
We're hoping to put out some bump outs, some more speed bumps, some more street lights. Those safety things that will help calm traffic and make pedestrians more visible and make it safer for our kids to get to school.
The city of Los Angeles Department of Public Works recently celebrated National Public Works Week, which recognizes and highlights the important work done by thousands of public works professionals. The theme this year was "The Power of Public Works." An exhibit was on display at City Hall that showcased the city's completed street repair projects from each council district. One LA resident said she has noticed the improvements to city streets.
They saw that there were some landscaped and greenery areas, making it safer for trees to grow, as well as improving accessibility and just the ability to walk.
An exhibit honoring Asian-American women in LA provided the backdrop as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month held its closing ceremonies. And there was a surprise musical artist as well. Anna Marcos takes us there.
The musical artist Milk got the party going at the closing ceremonies for Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. She was one of the women honored.
Then we have our very own Milk, one of our performers at this year's Identity LA, who literally wrote the theme for the women's march.
This was a chance for lots of selfies with and without the honorees at this exhibit in the Bridge Gallery at City Hall. The exhibit honoring 14 Asian-American women from all walks of life: LAPD chopper pilots, artists, musicians, civil rights attorneys, activists, and more. All women serving as role models and fighting for the rights of people in their communities.
For the past month, they have literally and figuratively been the bridge, the bridge between cultures, perceptions, and our future.
The event aimed to help spread the message of diversity in our community, especially for a group that is rarely highlighted.
Ladies, it's because of you and what you've been able to do with your careers that little girls around our city are going to be able to grow up and see themselves in one of you.
The Asian Pacific Islander population is the fastest-growing ethnic population in the state and in the nation. We now have more API legislative representation in the state than ever before.
Well, you know, our community benefits from a rich cultural diversity. And so it's exciting that we celebrate the Asian diaspora in music, in food, in the arts. It's just a great way to celebrate, and again, recognize that we are all one.
Wait, back up a minute. Yes, let's have a look at some of that food. Dim sum, anyone? Or a little milk is good, too. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Jump into summer by jumping into a canoe at the LA River. Make a splash at the Hanson Dam Swim Lake and Pool. And it's all about vegan vibes at this downtown LA event. All this and this week's Things to Do. This summer, enjoy plenty of water activities right here in the city. The Los Angeles River Recreation Zones in the Elysian Valley and the Sepulveda Basin are open for their sixth season. Activities such as kayaking, canoeing, fishing, and birdwatching will all be open to the public from sunrise to sunset through September 30. Visit la river recreation.org to find out about river conditions, weather, and closure information. Pool activities have begun in Lakeview Terrace. From June 9th to September 3rd, the Swim Lake will be open from 11 a.m. to 6 p.m. seven days a week. Following Labor Day on September 3rd, the Swim Lake will be open only on the weekends through September 30. The Swim Lake features two water slides, a sand volleyball court, grass picnic areas, and cabana rentals. For more, call the Aquatic Center at 818-899-3779. It's the Vegan Playground, the festival uniting lovers of food, music, art, ideas, and good vibes. Experience the magic and energy of a community connecting with one another in a celebration of life and all things that make humanity beautiful. It all takes place Saturday, June 16th, from 12 p.m. to 10 p.m. at Pershing Square in downtown LA. And that's a look at some things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at elacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2,009,111 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti. I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies. 911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard. If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond. Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Bloomfield, Bonin, Buscano, Sadio, Anglender, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Kokorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Councilmember Bonin moves, Councilmember Sadio seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Harris Dawson moves, and Councilmember Kokorian seconds. Next item, please.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we can have everybody in council chambers please rise for the flag salute. It'll be led today by Councilmember David Rue.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise and put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Rue. Next, let's go ahead and turn our attention to the agenda if we could. We'll first go into general public comment. Do we have cards for general public comment?
Yes, there are three cards.
Okay. Antonio Lopez? Antonio Lopez here? Come on up. Hey, please come on up, yes.
Okay, fine.
Buenos dias, cada uno de ustedes.
Good morning, everyone.
Este es City Hall, concejales y cada uno de ustedes.
Good morning, City Hall, everyone that is sitting here.
Lo que quiero yo decirles, el señor jefe de policía, señor Becker está haciendo buen trabajo.
What I want to tell you is the chief of police, Mr. Beck, is doing a great job. You don't have to lay him off.
Cambio de tema.
Change of subject.
Quiero decirle a cada uno de ustedes.
I want to tell everyone here.
De la campaña de Antonio Villarrealosa.
To talk to you about the campaign of Mr. Villarrealosa to go as governor.
El Capitolio de California. Estuvo equivocado las máquinas tecnológicas.
The machines were in...
Estuvieron en mal servicio y estuvo en los teléfonos.
The machines were not working. I was in the, I was on the phone.
El 15% tenía de perder Antonio Villarrealosa.
15%.
75% tenía de que ganar.
15% was Mr. Villarrealosa to lose and 85% to win.
No tiene por qué poner publicidad a gente como era, como es, el Gibby Wilson.
Hila Solis does not have to put any publicity to that.
Aprobado la marihuana. ¿Qué van a decir el sistema federal? ¿Cómo van a llevar?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time, sir, thank you very much. Your time is up. The next speaker, please. Daniel Jones, sir, thank you. Daniel Jones? Come on up.
Gracias. Si, gracias.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here. I'd just like to say, Venice Beach during the weekends needs porta potties down there. There's like an hour and a half wait down there. We understand that California is a hot spot to be, and Southern California is the hottest place to be on the planet for tourism. And Governor Brown said we have a windfall, and I don't see any reason why HHH is tied up in court. If you want to see me there, just point me there. And let's keep doing a great job. And this is for every angel in the city of Los Angeles. The trash is disappearing immensely. It's beautiful. Thank you, and all have a good day. Bye-bye.
Okay, and Antonio Ramirez? Just for general public comment, one minute? One minute? Antonio, if I could please also, you know, respect the, Ms. Ramirez? Yeah, that, we have a lot of children visiting here today, too, as they keep our comments.
Jesus Christ, censorship. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, let's start with the Grand Park at here, the Music Center Grand Park. Please tell Armando, the wetback gangbanger who works as a housekeeping, he knows, he routinely pokes his nose into the bathroom when women are inside in the mornings. He's put, he's blowing the leaf blower and he's poking.
Thank you very much. So your time is up. Now you're disrupting this meeting. You're disrupting this meeting. All right, and for those of you visiting City Hall for the first time, welcome to public comment and your First Amendment rights as well. So with that, Madam Clerk, if we could turn our attention to the agenda, and let's just go ahead and go through the agenda. And that'll, that'll go ahead and close general public comment. We have no more speakers here for general public comment. We have speakers that are on specific items, and we'll get to those. But general public comment is now closed. Okay, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay, then we have cards on that?
There are no cards.
Okay, then we can go ahead and vote on item one. We can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the, up. Mr. Bloomfield?
I'm not on the board.
We'll add you to the board?
Okay.
Okay, and then we can close the roll, tabulate, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That's approved. Next items, please.
Items two through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Budget and Finance Committee report for item two has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and ask for, for specials on those?
For all?
For items that are called special?
Mr. President, I'm just checking on three. If the Amendment 3A has been circulated, is that part of the record, or should we call that special and hold it for...
We'll hold that on the desk for a moment.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we can vote on the remaining items. And we have a request from Mr. O'Farrell for item four to be hauled on the desk for a moment. Mr. Corretts?
Yeah, I also wanted to ask that we hold item number four, so.
Okay, and then we can vote on the remaining items, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 14 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, and so we can go ahead and, we have cards on those?
Yes, there are cards on 15, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, and 23.
Okay, then we can vote on the balance of those items. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 25 through 27 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I'll turn our attention to Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Each of these items has been heard in Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations as to each. They are all settlements and can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, and last the city attorney, do you want to read any of those into the record? We're good to vote.
For the record, Mr. President, item 25, in the case entitled Diane Laverne Johnson versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. On item 26, in the case entitled Susan Garcia versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to 1.3 million in settlement of the matter. And finally, for item 27, in the case entitled Ronald Trina versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $450,000 in settlement.
All righty, then we'll go ahead and open the roll on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special.
We do have a reconsideration from last Friday. Council file 18-0173 relative to the Annenberg Foundation donation. So we can open the roll for reconsideration to bring that back. Now the rolls open. Okay, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that item is now before us. Do we have an amending motion for it? Mr. Corretts?
Yes, if you could continue that for 60 days, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
And that would be to August 10th.
August 10th, okay, so we'll go ahead and continue that till August 10th without further ado. Okay, that'll be the order without objection, and next items, please.
That takes council back to items called special or presentations.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, did you wish to, we held 420 on the desk for you?
Yeah, just another...
We can go to the presentation?
Yeah.
Great, okay, then Mr. Corretts has a special presentation. We'll turn over the floor to you. While Mr. Corretts is making his way to the podium, if everybody can also draw their attention to Mr. Corretts' tie today. I think it's very fitting, given the presentation.
And just so the audience and council knows, this is the Hamilton High School Jazz Ensemble here with us today.
The great American band, the Fat Giants, this is back though.
And that'll go ahead and close general public comment. We have no more speakers here for general public comment. We have speakers that are on specific items, and we'll get to those, but general public comment is now closed. Okay, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay, then we have cards on that?
There are no cards.
Okay, then we can go ahead and vote on item one. We can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the -- Mr. Blumenfeld.
I'm not on the board.
We'll add you to the board. Okay, and then we can close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That's approved. Next items, please.
Items two through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Budget and Finance Committee report for item two has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and ask for specials on those?
For all?
For items that are called special?
Mr. President, I'm just checking on three. If the amendment 3A has been circulated, is that part of the record, or should we call that special and hold it for?
We'll hold that on the desk for a moment.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we can vote on the remaining items. And we have a request from Mr. O'Farrell for item four to be held on the desk for a moment. Mr. Corretts?
Yeah, I also wanted to ask that we hold item number four.
Okay, and then we can vote on the remaining items, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 14 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, and so we can go ahead and -- we have cards on those?
Yes, there are cards on 15, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, and 23.
Okay, then we can vote on the balance of those items. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 25 through 27 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I'll turn our attention to Mr. Corrian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Each of these items has been heard in Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations as to each. They are all settlements and can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, and last the city attorney, do you want to read any of those into the record? We're good to vote.
For the record, Mr. President, item 25, in the case entitled Diane Laverne Johnson versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. On item 26, in the case entitled Susan Garcia versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $1.3 million in settlement of the matter. And finally, for item 27, in the case entitled Ronald Trina versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $450,000 in settlement.
All righty, then, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special.
We do have a reconsideration from last Friday. Council file 18-0173 relative to the Annenberg Foundation donation. So we can open the roll for reconsideration to bring that back. Okay, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that item is now before us. Do we have an amending motion for it?
Can we do that?
Mr. Corretts?
Yes, if you could continue that for 60 days, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
And that would be to August 10th.
August 10th, okay, so we'll go ahead and continue that till August 10th without further ado. Okay, that'll be the order without objection, and next items, please.
That takes council back to items called special or presentations.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, did you wish to -- we held 4:20 on the desk for you?
Yeah, just another --
We can go to the presentation?
Yeah.
Great, okay, then, Mr. Corretts has a special presentation. We'll turn over the floor to you. While Mr. Corretts is making his way to the podium, if everybody can also draw their attention to Mr. Corretts' tie today. I think it's very fitting, given the presentation.
Just so the audience and council knows, this is the Hamilton High School Jazz Ensemble
The great American band Thad Jones is at backbone. One, two, one, two, three, and...
Let's give them another big hand. And let's also give a round of applause to Hamilton Jazz Ensemble Director Jim Focia. Colleagues, it gives me great pleasure to host this event here in the council chambers. We have with us the Hamilton High School Jazz Ensemble. Not only am I extraordinarily pleased to be the council member that represents Hamilton High School, but of course, I'm extra happy because I'm also a Hamilton alum. Now, I did play the tuba, among other instruments, but I would have to say, they probably wouldn't have even allowed me to audition with this band. They are incredibly talented. These students have performed and competed successfully at top jazz festivals in the United States, including the Monterey Jazz Festival and the Playboy Jazz Festival. They were awarded Most Outstanding High School Ensemble by Downbeat Magazine and have performed with jazz legends including Al Jarreau, Terrell Stafford, Andy Martin, and John Clayton. We're also joined today by the Chinese Council General to Los Angeles, Ambassador Zhang Ping. With us also is Fabiola Vilches, who's the president and executive director of Sister Cities of Los Angeles. Sherman Zhang, the chairman of China General Chamber of Commerce. And Patty McGenett, the vice president of L.A. Tourism and Convention Board. This morning, we had a press conference to announce that these 20 talented young jazz musicians have been selected by Sister Cities and China General Chamber of Commerce to visit both Chengdu and Shanghai in China. While in Chengdu, the Hamilton students will participate in the 12th Annual Sister Cities International Youth Music Festival. In addition, generous Chinese business sponsorship will allow the students to spend four days in Shanghai, where they will also perform and enjoy opportunities to learn about cultural, economic, and educational aspects of one of the most populous and dynamic cities in the world. The collaboration amongst Los Angeles and China partners amidst a divisive national agenda demonstrates local vision and commitment to partnership and support of longstanding economic and cultural ties. And to that end, for our own Hamilton students, this will not only be an incredible experience for them, but a wonderful opportunity to bridge international cultural bonds through music. And I thank them for their performance here of Backbone by Thad Jones. And now I'd like to hear from the Chinese Council General to Los Angeles, Ambassador Zhang Ping.
Thank you very much, councilman. Honorable chairman, honorable members of the council, we are so excited to hear that 20 young talented musicians from Hamilton High School Jazz Ensemble well traveled to China this July to join in the Sichuan International Youth Music Festival. I think this is a very big event for our cultural exchanges between the City of Los Angeles and the Chinese cities. And this is very beneficial to the mutual understanding and friendship between our two countries and two peoples. So we thank you for your great support, and also we wish to thank our Chinese companies who have made a big effort to provide sponsorship to this trip. So we hope that their trip will have a -- will play a wonderful role in promoting our cultural exchanges, and I hope that they will have a wonderful time visiting China, Chengdu, and Shanghai. Thank you very much. We hope we will have more of this kind of program in the future. Thank you.
And now we'd like to ask Fabiola Vilches, president and executive director of Sister Cities of Los Angeles, to join us and say a few good words.
Thank you. Honorable members of the city council, it's such a pleasure to be here this morning. I promise not to take too long. I actually used to work here a long time ago, so I know that time is of essence. I don't want to repeat what others have said, but I think we all agree that it's critical to bring the people of China and the U.S. together to build relationships and friendship. Our futures are linked to one another, especially in Los Angeles. We have over a million Chinese people here. We have the port and the airport, major economic drivers who do a lot of business with China. So Sister Cities of Los Angeles is proud of the talent that we have in our city, and we are so happy to be able to share this talent with our brothers and sisters in China. On behalf of Sister Cities, I would like to thank all of our partners in this endeavor. It would be -- it would take me a lot of time to mention all of them, but I would particularly like to highlight the China General Chamber of Commerce. We have Chairman Zhang here with us today. Hainan Airlines, they actually are working with us to get all these kids, 20 of them, plus four more people, to China. So without Hainan Airlines, we couldn't do this. And Greenline USA, who is our main sponsor for the Shanghai portion of the trip, we are so very grateful for this. We look forward to providing more youth, the opportunity to engage with youth from around our sister cities and potential sister cities, which Chengdu is one of them, and become global fluent ambassadors for the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
And also, we're joined by Brenda Pensamiento, the principal of Hamilton High School.
Thank you, councilmember and everyone. I really just want to say thank you. Thank you for supporting public education and the arts. It is an honor to be here, standing next to a Hamilton High School alum who understands how important this is. And at this point, I would like to really bring the man who's behind all of this, because it's not the school principal, it's always the teacher that makes this happen. So Mr. Jim Focia, can you come up?
A very quick thank you to the Los Angeles City Council for having us this morning. We're really honored to be here. Very rarely lately does our federal government speak for the people, and I think that the young people of Los Angeles will make the perfect ambassadors to China and speaking the language that the entire world can understand and embrace, and that is music. And with your being a Hamilton alumnus, we definitely wanted to send you off with an AMPA sweatshirt.
So now you can say you play with a band.
Exactly. So now you're one of the guys.
Well, that's great. Let's give them another big round of applause. That was fantastic. What a -- Mr. Corretts, what a great way to open up the council week, and I would suggest to the other members that might have some musical, cultural leaders in our own communities to bring them in to start the councils. That was phenomenal, so thank you.
Actually, I plan to bring them back every Tuesday to start the week.
Every Tuesday, perfect, perfect.
And I'd like to call up -- call back up Chinese Council General Zhang Ping.
Thank you, councilman. Well, in honor to commemorate his -- this historical visit to China, on behalf of the Chinese Council General, I would like to present the director this plaque to commemorate this visit. So it says, "Commemorating Hamilton High School Jazz Ensemble's China Tour of July 2018. Connecting the Young Hearts of the United States and China Through Music. The Council General of the People's Republic of China in Los Angeles, June 12, 2018."
Okay, members, while they're taking photos, I know item three, we'll turn our attention back to the agenda for a moment. Item three has been circulated. We can go ahead and vote on that item? If we can go ahead and open the roll on item three?
And, Mr. President, prior to the vote, I just want to note for the record that the ordinance before council is actually dated June 11, 2018.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Go ahead and close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved, thank you. Oh, Mr. Corretts, did you have more?
Yes, I'd like to make one last presentation to the Hamilton High School Jazz Ensemble from the entire city council and Mayor Garcetti.
All right, let's give them another big round of applause. I know Councilmember Busciano asked earlier if they wanted to add some vocals. He would be happy to join them on the trip and sing along. It'll be an Italian jazz opera.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. Today, we have a special presentation that's been a long time coming, at least 50 years. Let me get -- let's give a warm welcome to the leadership, the legacy, and the future of the Brotherhood Crusade. Joining me today are President, Mrs. Sharice Brimmon Weaver, president and CEO, Mr. Curtis Silvers, Executive VP, and Dr. Deandra Brimmon, Director of Grid and Sports Center. Let's give it up for the leadership team of the Brotherhood Crusade. The Crusade is a grassroots organization that was founded with the mission to remove barriers to success and facilitate opportunities for folks to have a better quality of life. I firmly believe this is a mission that we all can get behind. In 1968, Walter Brimmon and others of the Los Angeles Black Congress organized and incorporated the Los Angeles Brotherhood Crusade. Walter Brimmon signed a personal note with Bank of America in the amount of $15,000 to start the organization that is now thriving and doing work throughout our community. In fact, this Friday, they're going to be celebrating the 50th anniversary. Let's give it up again. 50th anniversary of service to adults and youth. And while they operate many locations throughout Southern California, I'm proud to say that they are headquartered still in the 9th District, right here on Slauson Avenue. Since its founding, the Crusade has provided human and social services to thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of Angelenos, youth and adults. These services include educational enrichment and academic assistance services, arts and drama presentations, at-risk youth prevention programs, health education, life and social service, social skills training, domestic violence assistance, just to name a few. To tell you more about what the Brotherhood Crusade does in the community here is the president and CEO, Mrs. Sharice Brimmon Weaver. Sharice?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Price and councilmembers. It's truly an honor to be with you this morning as we celebrate 50 years of service. As the councilmember mentioned, really reflecting back on our history from the Black Congress, people like Ernie Priestley, Cliff Jones, Opal Jones, so many people who really helped build our institution. My late father, Walter Brimmon, as Corrin mentioned, took out a second on our home to really reflect and give back to the community of South LA. Many of you know our institutional builder Danny Bakewell, who was at the helm for 35 years, and so it's really just a joy to follow in the footsteps of not only the Black Congress, my late father, Danny Bakewell, as well as now myself as the president and CEO. Corrin mentioned, today, we serve over 3,000 young people through learning, thriving, connecting, working. We are a grid provider, a youth source center with the City of Los Angeles, as well as providing educational services, literacy, job training, you name it, we are on the case in South LA. So it is truly an honor to be with you, and I hope all the councilmembers can join us on Friday, June 15, at the California Science Center in the community, at the Annenberg Room, for a celebration of really just thanking all of the people who helped build our institution. It was really the community and elected officials who have supported us for 50 years that has allowed us to do this great work. So I'm truly honored, and I thank all of you for your past support as well as your future support.
Thank you. I'm going to ask councilmen, won't you join me for this picture?
All right, let's give them another big round of applause. Thank you very much. 50 years. Congratulations.
On behalf of a grateful community, a proclamation signed by all members of the council, and we are honored that you are of service in our community. we are honored that you were of service in our community.
Mr. Harris Dawson, I know you also have your name on the queue. Did you want to add something from the podium?
Sure. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for recognizing that we had our button pushed. I just want to rise and thank Mr. Price for bringing this presentation today. Fifty years running a community-based organization is no small feat. I think having a strong African-American community and African-American organizations is something we've come to take for granted in the city of Los Angeles, but it doesn't just happen. That putting a second on your house is a big deal and a big commitment, and we want to make sure we recognize that. Also, I would say about the Brotherhood Crusade in this time period, you see me in that chair and joined by several of my colleagues, really pushing for local hire, targeted local hire of folks in our community. The Brotherhood Crusade is one of the leading organizations that gets people ready to enter that process and to go to work on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. So, we're very grateful for everything that you have done, and we look forward to the big party in Exposition Park on Friday night. And, Mr. President, she says you don't have to wear a suit to this party, so everybody's welcome. There'll be live music and lots of other big fun. Thank you all so much.
I'll be there with a suit on. Congratulations. No, thank you for that. All right, so that concludes the presentations. We'll actually turn our attention back to the council agenda now for items that have been called, that have speaker cards? Okay, so we're going to go into multiple speaker cards. Antonia Ramirez? You're on items four, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, and 23?
Thank you, Officer Marco Duarte, and all the other officers, Gracián Almartínez, for being gracious, professional, and Officer Morris, and Hiramoto-san, thank you for being gracious, kind, and courteous, and dignified, and so professional. You have no idea. You bring sanity back into all of us who go through such pain coming here and bombastically trying to correct the city and the problems and the crimes. Having said that, number four, thank you, the cultural sensitivity. Ladies and gentlemen, all of us have been victims of the harassment of these cultural transgenders. They walk into the bathrooms, and they bully, abuse, violate, and also steal from a lot of the women. I understand that these lesbians and transgender individuals not only are pushing and thrashing themselves on people and women, they are hate mongers, racist hate mongers, they hate heterosexual women. So, a lot of these transgender and lesbian and lesbian, outright attack, abuse, gang stalk, and harass law-abiding citizens and heterosexual people. Hollywood shuts down and rams down all these trannies down our throats. When does it end? Stop this abuse and the cultural sensitivity shit. It doesn't work. No more will we tolerate this transgender and lesbian shit. Thank you. And number 17, ladies and gentlemen, before you do what you need to do, what I suggest is you put more deputies and more LAPD officers all over the rail, buses, and transit systems. We have a gang, wetback, and junkie, and gang offense, and as well as drug epidemic all over the rail system. And these evil felons committing crimes against law-abiding citizens, fear intimidation, violence, gang stalking, harassment, and brute force. Stop the violence and harassment and gang stalking at all rail system hubs. And I thank the LAPD, and I thank the sheriff's deputies for being out there and patrolling and telling these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers to get their feet off the seats. Those are for sitting, not for stepping on. God bless the LAPD, and God bless the sheriff's deputies. Finally, we stand something. What we need to do is get rid of these goddamn judges and attorneys. And next one, you said number 18, and I'm sorry, 22. Number 22, ladies and gentlemen, Lincoln Heights is a shithole. It is gang-infested. Defort, defort, these wetbacks and gangbangers and junkies, and get cartels out of there, and the neighborhood itself will clean up. Once you get rid of the wetbacks and the gangbangers, you will have no more problems, crime, gang epidemic, or gang infestation, or drugs, and all sorts of contraband. And there will be no more pedophiles, because most of the Latinos are pedophiles. Most of these gangbangers are immature. They're pussies. They're filthy, and they're goddamn violent and abusive.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Your time is up. Please have a seat. Thank you. All right, so the next speaker, please. Actually, we're going to go ahead and take, we can vote on a number of items. We're going to go ahead and vote on items four, seven, oh, four special, I'm sorry, 17, 20. Sorry. Okay, so we'll go back to this. 17, 18, 21, and 23. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We're going to take number 18 now. Lauren Mitchell, welcome back. Come on up.
Is this for 17?
One minute on number 18.
Oh, wait. I didn't mean 18. 18, 19? Lauren Mitchell or Lauren Littrell?
Littrell. Yeah, it's you.
Yeah, I didn't sign up for 17.
You have one item on number 18. That's all you have today. So, you have one minute for number 18. Did you wish to speak on 18?
There's an issue with the number of units in the proposed motion. There's either 137 or 33, and I feel that that is a material fact that should be fixed. And these are for rental apartments and not in exempt use. And we should be spending, I think it's bond money, on helping the homeless and fixing the environmental factors. That's it. And I did general, right?
No, you did not. We already closed general public comment. So, thank you very much. Your time is up, though. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here again. All right. So, we can go ahead and vote on item 18, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll on item 18. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great. Ms. O'Farrell, you ready on item four and 20?
Colleagues, item four and item 20. Item four is relative to the equal access rule, transgender cultural sensitivity training and the transgender advisory council funding. Item 20 is regarding report requested on programs, funding, and other issues in relation to the LGBT older adult population. I want to thank our colleague David Rue for waiving the item out of his Health Committee, item 20 out of his Health Committee, so that we could adopt these two very, very important pieces of LGBT legislation during Pride Month. I also want to acknowledge Karina Somala, who is Chair of the Transgender Advisory Council. Welcome, Karina, and I want to thank you for your work. My office has been working with the LGBT community on a variety of these legislative actions, the two of which we're voting on today, equal access rules, transgender cultural sensitivity training, and issues raised in relation to the LGBT older adult population. I also want to thank the Los Angeles Police Department, the Department of Aging, the Fire Department, the city's transgender advisory council, as I mentioned, and our own Human Relations Commission on these very two important issues. What I learned in committee was that no other city is embarking on this journey to make it a requirement for all city employees to have the kinds of sensitivity training that will make life a little bit easier for our transgender community. So, Los Angeles is once again a leader and a pioneer in this. And I want to, again, thank all the departments and all the participants and all the city staff that has worked on the reporting to get us to this point. And it's especially relevant on the two-year anniversary of the Pulse nightclub tragedy. So, I ask for unanimous aye vote on these two important items that seem maybe not as significant as they are going to turn out to be, in that we are the first city to do the sensitivity training. Thank you.
Okay, so we can go ahead and vote on those two items. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. Now, we'll go into items 15 and 22. We have cards, multiple cards on both of those items, so we can take those together. Carlton? Carlton Massey? I'm sorry? Okay. Flavio? Followed by, and then if you want to come up as well, Irene, Michael Banner, Misty, Sherry, Faran, Steve Casten, and Vera. Those are all the speakers on that item.
Hi, my name is Flavio Olivas. My father is a property owner in Lincoln Heights. We are part of the Lincoln Heights Benefit Association, and we're asking for the City Council to help us continue forward in passing the Business Improvement District for Lincoln Heights. We want to thank Mr. Sadio for his support, and we hope that City Council also supports us as well. Lincoln Heights Benefit Association does a lot of things, maintenance, security. And the Lincoln Heights community has really got a lot cleaner and a lot safer, and there's a lot of people being able to walk up and down the streets and do more shopping in our local businesses. And I want to thank Lincoln Heights property owners for voting and hoping that we can continue the progress for the Lincoln Heights Benefit Association.
Good morning. My name is Irene Olgin. I'm Director of Preventive Health and Patient and Community Relations Director at Arroyo Vista Family Health Center. Arroyo Vista Family Health Center is a nonprofit community health center who has provided comprehensive healthcare services for 37 years. I am here also to support the Lincoln Heights Benefit Association, more formally known as the Lincoln Heights BID, for the following public health reasons, maintenance, security, marketing, and promotion. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank our Councilman Gil Sadio for his unwavering support of public health, for his dedication and commitment in keeping our communities healthy and free of public health concerns. Also respectfully asking the City Council to support, to continue supporting BIDs such as the Lincoln Heights Benefit Association. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Michael Banner. I'm the President and CEO of the Los Angeles Local Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit finance company that works on corridor revitalizations and have worked with bids throughout the city. We're also a property owner in Lincoln Heights and own a parcel that we are intending to invest $2 million in, which is adjacent to the Downey Recreation Center and the new Albion Riverside Park that is under construction now. Quite frankly, we probably wouldn't feel that strongly about making a $2 million investment in this property if there wasn't an active bid. So, we urge an aye vote on items 15 and 22. Two other things I'd like to mention in passing is that, one, we're also working with the Urban Land Institute. I am very active in the Urban Land Institute, and we have a corridor strategy that we're trying to launch in Lincoln Heights as our first example of how you work on revitalizing business districts that are probably seeing better days. That's going to cost us about $30,000 to make that investment. We hope we get that project off the ground during the summer, to tap. And some of you may have had taps done in your district. And I think in a larger context throughout the city, the importance of bids in revitalizing commercial districts can't be understated. And I'd urge you all to consider that if you don't have an active bid, you probably are not getting as much bang for the buck that you could in your commercial districts. Thank you all.
Good morning. And good morning, Mr. Our honorary Councilman Gil Sadio. First of all, we'd like to thank Gil Sadio for all the support he has given Lincoln Heights, not only the bid, but everything, our youth programs, our senior citizen programs. And he continues to support our high schools in our community. I'm here on behalf of the farmer's market in Lincoln Heights. I'm the Assistant Manager. We finally have a farmer's market. Tomorrow, we are celebrating our third year. And I love Lincoln Heights. I've lived in Lincoln Heights 72 years, born and raised in Lincoln Heights, so I will fight for our community. We hope that everyone votes for our bid. We need it. We want it. Our schools are safe. Our community is safe. Our streets are clean. The beautification, 10 years ago, our streets were not clean. Our kids from our neighborhood schools make comments on our clean streets, our safety, and the beautification of our community. So, please support the bid. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council. My name is Steve Casten. I'm a property owner and business owner at 2718 North Broadway since 1982. I am also the current president of the Lincoln Heights Bid. I want to thank Councilman Sadio for his support of the bid. When the current bid was established 10 years ago, our business corridor was in terrible shape. Graffiti, trash in the street and on the sidewalk. There were vacant storefronts. Business was really bad. With our private security and our current cleanup crews, trash removal, graffiti removal, we've revitalized the business corridor. We need our bid to be renewed. It expires in December, and I know that the bid has kept property values up, businesses in business, and a vital business corridor. We have a well-run bid with Misty Iwatsu as our Executive Director, and all of the board members are property owners and business people in the community. We're well-run. Our money is spent well. Please support Councilman Sadio and our property owners and business people with a yes vote for the bid's renewal. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Flavio Olivas. I'm a member of the Lincoln Heights Benefit Association since the beginning. I'd like to thank Councilman Sadio and the City Council for your support. We ask you for the passing of the Lincoln Heights Benefit Association. The Lincoln Heights Benefit Association is critical for keeping Lincoln Heights clean and safe for our neighborhood, for our business. It provides work and services for many people living and working there. Thank you.
I just want to thank all the councilmembers today for hearing us, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, for supporting the bid.
Okay, Councilmember Sadio, did you wish to speak?
Colleagues, I want to encourage you to support this. There's a sense of urgency. We need this to get done today, because if we fail to, we lose out on opportunities with respect to the tax rolls. And so, it's very critical that this get done today. I want to thank everybody from the bid. You guys were privileged to hear how much the people from Lincoln Heights love their community, and this is a demonstration of it. They're all active. They're all leaders. Vera was my Woman of the Year. You may remember her from a couple of years You may remember her from a couple of years ago. In addition to our work there, we do a lot of work around the high school. We have a bank there that trains people onsite with banking services in a community that was not, that was lacking in financial services. And in addition, then we have the well-known, famous, one of the first, if not the first, major parks in the city of Los Angeles, which is Lincoln Park, and we've made huge commitments there, and we look forward to cutting ribbon on our new Olympic-sized pool soon, and other activities working with USC taking place on the park. And so, we're very proud of Lincoln Park. We're very proud of Lincoln Heights. It's transforming. It's changing. It's a mature representation of how we handle change in our city, and you've just met the leaders who are managing that change. And so, I want to thank the bid for being here, and I want to encourage my colleagues to vote on this matter today. Thank you so much, and welcome, Lincoln Heights. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. We have a number of items requested for fourth with as well. Items one, two, fifteen, eighteen, and nineteen. So, we'll go ahead and send those fourth with without objection, and that'll be the Okay, and that should clear the council agenda. We have items for posting and referral?
Yes, there are motions for posting and referral.
Okay, we'll go ahead and post and refer those, colleagues. Do we have any announcements? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? Looking to my right, we do. If everybody can please rise for adjourning motions, if everybody in council chambers can please rise, including our guests that are here today, if you could please rise for adjourning motions. Councilmember Buscayna.
Thank you, colleagues. We lost a true hero in San Pedro, one of, we call the founding fathers, I would say, in youth advocacy. Amel Bobic passed away on June 5th at ninety-one years young, surrounded by his loving family. He was well-known by the San Pedro community, as well as a beloved husband, father, grandfather, friend, and a mentor to many. Born March fifteenth, nineteen twenty-seven, Amel was the youngest of five children of Tom and Ivanka Bobic. He attended Fifteenth Street School, Dana Junior High School, and San Pedro High, and upon graduating in nineteen forty-five, Amel was drafted during World War II and served in the Army Air Corps. After his discharge as a Staff Sergeant, he attended UCLA and became a lifelong Bruin. After he graduated, he joined the Santa Fe Railway, where he would work for thirty-seven years in various management roles until his retirement in nineteen eighty-seven. Nineteen fifty-eight, Amel married his neighbor, Katie Reskisich, who he would have seven children with. Very active, member of our community, advocated for sports facilities and opportunities for San Pedro youth. He was instrumental in the building of gymnasiums at Bogdanovich Park, Peck Park, and San Pedro High School, also facilitated the development of the Field of Dreams, Pirate Stadium, as well as the Twenty-Second Street Park at the Port of Los Angeles. He was a co-founder of the San Pedro Youth Coalition, serving in the group's leadership for over twenty-five years until retiring just a few years ago. Amel Bobic is survived by his loving wife of sixty years, his sister Ruby, children Tom, Ann, John, Mary, Jim, Chrissy, and Robert, and eighteen grandchildren. I ran into Amel's son, Robert Bobic, at the San Pedro High School graduation, and during his last final days, John shared with me the story of his son, Ryan. Now, Amel Bobic was a huge Nolan Ryan fan, and during the last couple of days of his life, John Bobic's son, which is Amel Bobic's grandson, Ryan presented the ball in which Ryan threw a no-hitter at his Little League game, and Amel was, like I said, in his final days, Ryan presented that no-hitter ball to his grandfather and shared with him that he threw a no-hitter at his baseball game, and Amel grabbed that ball and kind of just raised it up and crunched it, and we know he was really proud of his grandson, Ryan. Amel will be truly missed by the San Pedro community. Our hearts go out to his loving family, members, and friends. Amel Bobic, may he rest in peace, and may perpetual light shine upon him. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Looking for any additional adjourning motions? Yes. Ms. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is not so much, excuse me, an adjourning motion, as it is a solemn commemoration of what happened exactly two years ago today in Orlando, Florida, with the Pulse nightclub shooting, where forty-nine innocent people lost their lives because a gunman busted through what they all felt was a safe haven, a gay nightclub. Fifty-three were injured. Many of the families still struggle to pay the medical bills. And on this two-year sad commemoration, another mass shooting happened in Orlando, where four people, four children, lost their lives because of a gunman and a known domestic abuser, which highlights the need for red flag laws, for other gun safety legislation across this country in every state, so innocent children from age one to twelve don't have to die because of a known domestic abuser bursting into their home and holding them hostage for twenty hours. Where I'm going with this, colleagues, is not to ask for another moment of silence. Mike Bonin and I read all of the names two years ago, and there have been many mass shootings since then. What I want to say is that there's an organization whose sole purpose is to sell weaponry across the United States, including weapons of war for domestic use, and that is none other than the NRA, and they're at it every day in state houses across the district, because they want to put more firearms into the hands of more people with literally no background check, no licensing, no anything, and we're better than that. And the families and the survivors of Pulse, we owe it to them to be active at the local and national level, so that we can enact sensible gun safety legislation across the country. And I'm very, very proud of the work that this council has done to that end in the state of California as a leader, and I hope that other states can learn from our example in the memory of those lost in Pulse and so many other mass shootings across this city. And lastly, let me just say that no community is more affected by gun violence than our inner cities in the United States. It is for all of those reasons that we need to act, and I do believe that this is the social justice issue of the day. And I don't ever want to forget the faces of those victims of Pulse nightclub. They're seared into my memory, and it is, I think, important that we never forget, never don't take it personally when things like this happen, because we have, we all have a moral and collective obligation to do something about this insanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other adjourning motions, colleagues, that we are officially adjourned. Thank you so much.
About ninety-nine percent of our clients are long-formant, then the other one percent is everybody else. Isaac opened back in the late Japanese. The business was began by my mother and my father, over forty years ago now. My father, he worked on the docks, he worked at the cannerys. So did my mother. My father used to take food from the house first, and that's how it began. My mother's tacos, her burritos got more popular than anything else. All the recipes are because of my mother. She was the one that knew how to cook. That's why my father fell over her, because my mother knew how to cook. She taught us well how to do everything. There's five of us. I'm the baby of the family. I have two sons. One's fifteen, and then my other one's eighteen. He's in college. He got a scholarship from mechanical engineering. That's the other reason why I come to work. It's madness at times. Even before we opened, they're already yanking on the door. If I didn't have my family with me here running the business, it would have been a lot harder on me. Our kitchen is small. It's like being on a ship. We're known for our carne asada, our green chili pork, which is...